Hey, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are here live for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going to stand for words of inspiration that someone is going to provide for us. Surprise. Who's feeling inspirational? I would like to give us the words because our words of inspiration person is not here. Anybody? Any takeers? Hey, you guys love hearing me talk, apparently. I will say, uh, I'll just bow your heads for just a moment. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the blessings of the city of Claussen. Thank you for all those who serve here, who live here, who work here, who shop here, who made this community what it is. We thank you for your blessings. Amen. Okay, uh, you may be seated, and we will have a roll call, please.
Mayor Milan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Here.
Councilor Sampson.
Here.
Councilor Shepherd.
Here.
Councilor Tinland.
Here.
As a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we would like to move on to approval of our agenda. Would someone like to approve our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda for September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Milan.
I'm sorry. You're in, yes, yes, I'm here.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
You.
We're gonna move on to the next item, which is public comment for items on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to any item on the agenda, please make your way to the podium. We ask that you give your name and your address. We'll allot you three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, city officials. Thank you. I have, I guess, three questions. One, uh, was the legal appoint- opinion regarding, uh, Laurent Nujai to the Board of Ethics? I was wondering if that was provided by his brother, the city attorney, or if that was a conflict. I was also aware now under new business that there's a consideration for the assessing services, the second time in as many years for a four percent rise in that cost. Um, if there is any possibility or consequence predictable of a no vote for that, um, it's a considerable increase, um, that, uh, the taxpayers are being asked to pay. And lastly, it has to do, uh, oh, with you, I guess, our, our elected voice, our cherished voice. I'm grateful to you who volunteer to do this work largely unpaid without a salary to serve the people who live here. Fatiguing as it is, were it not for you, there may be no check and balance, no voice for us, uh, and it would propagate a great deal of corruption and problems for the city and the people who live in it. So thank you for doing what you do. I, I'm never tired of saying that. I know how hard it is. My comment today has to do with the personnel evaluation of our city clerk. I have no quarrel with August. I have been treated nothing but fairly and cordially by him throughout the time I have been here. But it seems to me if the charter revision in November passes, this will be the last time you have the opportunity to reflect our voice, the voter's voice, in his evaluation. So I thought I would remind you what a major responsibility it is. Uh, this person chooses which ballot applications are fraudulent or authentic. Uh, recently, ten thousand such applications were discovered in the two thousand and twenty election in Muskegon County. This person, uh, will choose how to publish public notices for things like our thirty-year surprise zero bond millage for the school. Um, it could be published in our local media, or it could be published in media in Chicago. This will be decided by this person. Um, this person may coach the charter commissioners on how to tie the hands behind your backs or not. Um, this person can green light zero content, yes or no ballot language, such as describes our city charter commission this year. Or it could be absolutely transparent, word for word, exactly tell it like it is, language like Madison Hyde is doing for their charter revisions this year. It is this person who will define excellence in defending the voice of the people he or she serves. And, uh, it's a cherished voice that I'm grateful Claussen got to have all this time, and I hope has for many years to come. Regardless of how you determine his performance, please commit to specific documentation of it in your minutes so that future counselors may know what they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello, Joan Horton for the DDA. I noticed that there is a reappointment on the agenda today. And we have a board member who it looks like this is replacing him. Uh, Mr. Kelly, Bill Kelly, has been on our board for a very long time, many years, has been named Volunteer of the Year. Has been voted as, uh, Board Member of the Year by the National Main Street Program and awarded. He's an active member on our board, not one of those people that comes in and sits and leaves, but somebody that you can call at the last minute and say, we need help, and he shows up. Those kind of board members are very hard to get. It's very hard to get volunteers that can give their time. And his reappointment has been in, his paperwork's been in for many months now, nearly a year. So, and recommended by the board, recommended by the board chair for his continued participation. So we would hope that, um, his reapplication would be something that would be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we will close public comment and move on to item number seven, which is proclamations and presentations. As we have none for this evening, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number eight, consideration of approving the following consent agenda. Item A, minutes of the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as presented. Item B, receive and file legal opinion regarding reappointment of Laurent Nujai to the Board of Ethics. Term was not expired when reappointed on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The existing term expiration should be September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And item C, a list of bills in the amount of eighteen million four hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'm moved. Support.
Thank you.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Passes, thank you.
Thank you. We've, um, approved our consent agenda. We'll now move to item number nine A, which is new business. First item will be consideration of the contract for the assessing services with the Oakland County Equalization Division. Someone like to give a brief update on this, please?
Uh, and just for continuity sake on the agenda, it said twenty-three through twenty-two, uh, twenty-two, uh, the contract is only through twenty-two-five. I just want to make that clear on the official agenda. Um, so we are in receipt of a renewal of the existing assessing contract for the Oakland County Equalization Division with the city of Claussen, which expired on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. This renewal contract contains the same provisions as of the existing contract, except for the following provision. The cost per parcel has been adjusted by a four percent increase. These adjustments reflect inflationary increases in the county's cost of providing services. In summary, the cost per parcel to the city will go up from fifteen dollars to fifteen dollars and sixty cents for each real property parcel. Personal property parcel rate will increase from thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents to fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents for two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four. And then fifteen dollars and sixty cents to sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents for each real property parcel. Uh, and then personal probably parcel rate will increase from fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents to fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents for two thousand and twenty-four through twenty-five. The rates listed above will be effective from July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. On June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, the city council approved a one-year contract with a four percent increase due to the county identifying new staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, as they're in the process of having a new director join their team. The current two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget reflects the four percent increase. Uh, it is recommended that the assessing contract with the Oakland County Equalization Division for real and personal property through twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five to continue providing assessing services to the city of Claussen be approved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I move the renewal of the assessing contract between the Oakland County Equalization Division and the city of Claussen for real and personal property for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five be approved and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Support.
So for questions, um, for the question of what is this? The increase of four percent, the concern over that, Mr. Hera, um, brought to us a moment or so ago. Would you please explain? I know we went to Oakland County for these services because they provided them at a more thorough, better rate than what we can do in-house. Is that true?
That's correct. I mean, just on a resource, uh, standpoint alone, the resources of the county are much more vast than we can have in-house. If we were to have an assessor, uh, in-house with the same type of background and experience, it would probably be well into the six-figure range. Um, just based on the high demand for assessors in cities. And so, you know, there are a handful of municipalities in Oakland County that use the county for assessing services just because it's more cost-effective. If we were to have an assessor, uh, sorry?
I liked it. Oh, are we good?
Yeah. So now we're, now we're live. So essentially, what I'm just saying is it's, it's more cost-effective to be using the county because of resources. And since they've had, uh, the new director join their team, uh, they've had, uh, three or four training sessions that they invite every municipality of the county to come out and learn, whether it's land division or, um, tax evasion incentives. And so they're not only just continuing their current service provision, they're expanding on, uh, what they offer to their communities. And so I've, I've attended a couple, and we can have staff go to each one of these. So, you know, I, I think they do a fantastic job. Whenever we need anyone from their office, they answer immediately. Uh, so I, I would recommend this, uh, contract.
Any other customs or concerns?
Yeah, what's our total cost a year?
So, um, as stated in the, uh, in the contract, it's fifteen dollars for each real property parcel. And so, uh, last year, um, we had five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight parcels. And so that number comes out to eighty-three thousand, a hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents. And so, uh, and then our personal pro- parcels was five hundred and fifty. And so since we're essentially landlocked, that that number of parcels fluctuates, you know, five to ten each year, maybe, um, just because we don't have a lot of land to divide, uh, any new parcel creation. And so that number remains relatively the same year to year. Uh, um, so I mean, for example, um, if we had a larger lot, you know, um, and it was split and divided, you know, twelve or fifteen parcels, then that number would raise much more. Um, but like I said, it's, it's, uh,
Go with the total.
What's our total?
Yeah, you, you had, uh, pardon me, total.
That math. So it's seven thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars for the personal property, and then uh, seventy-nine thousand nine twenty for, uh, come, the uh, real parcel. So eighty, eighty-eight thousand, eighty, eighty-nine thousand.
Anyone else?
Let me go ahead. No, just my one question. Then the reason for the four percent is totally for inflation. Is that their rationale for the four percent increase?
And increase of, um, property values, it's just what they're, they're providing that number to every single municipality that they provide service for.
You mentioned, uh, follow-up on that. You mentioned that there is expanding the services, that they were, and maybe expand services isn't the right word. They're offering more to their communities with trainings and that kind of stuff.
So I guess expanded service is probably not the right terminology, but they're offering more to their communities to partake if they wish to, which, you know, like I said, I've, I've chose to go to some of those trains. And I think they've been very beneficial. They've had members from the state tax commission come out, teach training, uh, so I think they're offering more to their communities.
Okay, so we're in, what'd you say, eighty-eight thousand per year for over the next three years? Okay, versus what you said before, if we had someone out in sight, I'd be able to retain and do that job, the, yeah.
Right. I mean, salary-wise, it's probably gonna be roughly, uh, six figures, and then that's not even including
Any benefits.
And whatnot. So.
All right.
He's the four percent. It's like a five-year contract, twenty-three to twenty-eight. Is it four percent per year or just four percent overall?
Uh, it's four percent each year, and just for, uh, you guys' knowledge, it is a two-year contract. So twenty-three to twenty-four, and then twenty-four to twenty-five.
Just an error.
Oh, I see. The, the error was twenty, there was an error on the actual agenda, but everything else in the packet.
Okay, so it's not fiscal year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-four, it's fiscal twenty-five. It's two years from, I just try to understand that.
July first, two thousand and twenty-three.
This goes.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
You.
We will, we will continue our contract with assessing services with Oakland County Equalization Division. And then we will move on to item nine B, which is consideration of appointing of Mike Twiddell to the Planning Commission on expired term of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move the appointment of Mike Twiddell to the Planning Commission on expired term of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three be approved. That was part of that.
Uh, so everyone knows Mike has, um, local business, and is very involved, also serves on the Chamber of Commerce, and does many things. So good call. Roll call, please.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mike Twiddell. Welcome you to the next Planning Commission meeting. Are you happy, Greg? It's part of our goal. Oh, and Josh, happy? All right, good. Moving on to item nine C, consideration of appointment of Evan Carpenter to the Planning Commission. And he is also agreed to serve as zoning board liaison to the unexpired term of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move the appointment of Evan Carpenter to the Planning Commission and as zoning board liaison to an unexpired term of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four be approved. Or.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yeah.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Congratulations, Evan Carpenter, and welcome to the Planning Commission slash zoning board of appeals. Uh, item nine D is consideration of the reappointment of Melissa Coda to the Traffic and Safety Board to an expired term of May first, two thousand and twenty-three, term to expire May first, two thousand and twenty-six.
So moved. Support.
Any comments? I didn't give you a chance to comment. Melissa's a long-term, uh, she's served on that capacity for a little while, too. She's an engineer with the city of Birmingham, so she brings great wealth to this position. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Congratulations, Melissa Coda, and welcome to the Traffic and Safety Board again. We'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of appointment of James Waddy the third to the Parks and Recreation Board to an expired term of May first, two thousand and twenty-three for a term to expire May first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved. Support.
James is here today. James, did you want to say anything to anyone here today? We'll allow you the opportunity.
Yes. Um, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council, I just wanted to say that if I should get appointed to Parks and Rec, it would be an honor to serve Claussen. Um, the reasons I've come to want to get on a board with, with you guys is because, uh, their Claussen has been so welcoming and of me when I didn't have a car, people gave me rides to work. When I didn't have food, people fed me, and I just want to say thank you to the city of Claussen okay, for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you coaching again this year? I see that Claussen wrestling shirt on.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
All right.
Go Claussen.
That's right, go Claussen. Anyone else learn, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilor Tinland.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Yes.
Congratulations, James Waddy the third. We welcome you to the Parks and Recreation Board, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, is item, item nine F, is consideration of appointment of Joseph Marucci to the Downtown Development Authority. He is a resident to the expired term of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, to expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Madam Mayor, I move the appointment of Joseph Marucci to the Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
Any comments? Yes, sir.
Do I have to start with comments or anyone else first?
You have your hand up. No one else seems to.
Um, just because we had the, uh, public comments at the beginning of the meeting, and also for me, um, I, the Downtown Development Authority is a very, uh, important seat, just like all the other ones, too. And I just didn't have the opportunity to give, uh, um, besides reading the appointment for Joe, just a background. Usually I have a conversation with this type of seat. So I would like to hear from the other councilmen as well and councilpeople on their thoughts on this specific, uh, appointment.
My question would be for probably Joan or or city manager, did there's, uh, eleven people selected for behind the committee, uh, the, that board.
I believe.
So many have to be residents, so many have to be a business owner. How are we staffed for that now?
I think it's eight to twelve. Is it eight to twelve, the number, does it sliding? Oh, that would make sense.
Now, so how are we staffed for that? How many, there's a break, but Joan is resident bylaws. So many have to be a business owner, so many have to be a resident.
Not more than fifty percent are to be residents. The rest have to have an interest in property in the downtown.
So how would this work out?
I don't understand your question. I don't understand what the question portion of this is. How would it work out? Based on what?
Uh, looking at the, if I'm looking at just, and I just saw this today, just looking at when the, the time ends, it appears that that's a seat that is currently being held by Bill Kelly. Um, so that would be, uh, at present, we are, our balance is correct.
Did, so. Kelly resigning or want to resign?
I don't know that that's a question that actually needs to be addressed. The, do you understand the appointment process? We recently went through the appointment process. Would someone other than me like to state what that is, just for clarity?
I'd just like to see, uh, uh, we disappoint somebody because they've done a good job for years. Bill Kelly's been on, actually. Had to be fifteen years that I know.
I think she hasn't been on for quite that long. And I think that it's not a question just of that. I think it partly is as a result of the mayor gets to make appointments as the mayor sees fit. And you, if you were the mayor, you would do the same thing. And I'm really looking to get some equity on some of our boards and commissions and to ensure that we have people who are positive and working together and wanting to be a part of an entire situation instead of a closed situation. And I appreciate Mr. Kelly's service. He's, he works very well with you. Um, but, uh, an appointment is not a permanent appointment. This is not royalty. You don't get to, you don't necessarily get something until you pass on or decide you don't want it. All right, we're just looking to make some changes and to create some equity and to put people in that are positive and have, like, you know, just change things up a teeny bit.
With eleven members on the board, and they look like for your terms, so correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like you got a new seat opening up every six months, right?
No, they're, they're for your terms.
Yes, but you got eleven people, so I assume they're staggered.
Um, not that staggered. No, they're not. When you look at, when you look at our list.
Right now, we'd like to, um, Mary Lynn's business owner.
I pulled up the document that, uh, the clerk, uh, had created for the end of twenty, uh, July with, uh, the number. So it looks like, um, with the mayor included, there's nine. And then with Joan included, there's ten.
Oh, I'm not a board.
Yeah, I know. I'm just for continuity sake, there's ten people here. And so, um, the director being one of them, they bring his board down to nine, and then with you being one, they're bringing down to eight.
So we can.
There's nine, nine board members, which includes the mayor.
So I can add two more if I choose.
You would have to have one business owner and one resident.
Right.
Or at least more business, or at least more business owners.
Bill Kelly, a business owner?
In Claussen, not in the downtown. So he's on the DDA board as a resident.
So if Mr. Marucci is also a resident.
Then we would have too many residents. We would have more than fifty percent.
We wouldn't. If we're not changing the mix at all, you just said Mr. Kelly was serving as a resident. Did I, did not just say that?
Mm-hmm.
So if he is changed, if he's, if he is replaced with Mr. Marucci, then we have the same makeup. There is no change.
We would have this, we would have the same makeup. And we would be losing a valued board member who is active, who gets along with the entire board. And I know you say he gets along with me, which I think is really odd, but, uh, Bill has been an active board member and working with all of the board members for many years.
That's great.
So, um, I.
You appreciate him, and I'm sure he'll still want to volunteer. So you can take volunteers in any capacity. Are you trying to say that I should not make this decision?
Well, they, the reapplication form, reapplication form came in, and it was, and the reapplication form asks if, um, the board chair wishes this person to stay on, which it did come in that way. And, um, the board does wish to have him stay on. So that was if you're, if you're asking, which the form does ask, then it does say that, um, it, it comes with the recommendation of the board chair.
Well, I appreciate that.
And she is out of town or would be here also, but. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I guess if we're gonna be making changes, uh, for the sake of new blood, I certainly would hope that the person would be, someone obviously be, uh, a resident uh, or a business owner, but they'd also be a bit younger. Um, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a fresh faces, uh, that are being appointed to learn the process and get different perspective. And I think we're just swapping one for the other.
And when you look at it, we, we had somebody that's volunteered for several years. Um, we just seen an amazing event happen, and, and I know he was part of it because I've seen him out there. Just to change up to change up. Um, I don't think that's time. I, he wants to do it. It's hard, we, we're, we're short on volunteers. It's hard, hard to get volunteers, and you, why kick somebody off the board? Just to change it up. Why not? We'll find Mr. Marucci, but there's plenty of other places we can put him, if he wants to get involved.
Mr. Marucci has a lot of sound experience with, um, of course, he's been a city manager, he's worked municipalities his entire life. He also was instrumental in starting our DDA, if I'm not mistaken. So.
Started it back.
Pardon me?
He started it back.
Pardon me?
He started it back again.
So he started it back, which is still starting it, right? Like, he's still part of the process. He's still part of the implementation of the board. And he understands it from a economic, business, city manager-type perspective, right, and administrator perspective, which is also a valid is valid experience that we might want to consider. And calling out ageism is pretty funny. Um, he has experience, and we like experience. He has experience on certain things, and that should be valuable.
I'm sorry, it's not ageism. I'd just like to have fresh perspective.
Was, when you said someone younger, that's ageism.
Well, why aren't we looking at somebody that's available? Who is younger? Are they not in the pipeline? Are they not?
Apparently, they're not in the pipeline today, and apparently the process states what the process states.
Okay. Well, I've stated my opinion on that.
I appreciate it. I do appreciate your opinion, and I appreciate your opinion, too. I, it's not to hurt Mr. Kelly's feelings. I think it's great that he's wanted to serve. But I've heard it said repeatedly lately that it's really important that we get the right people in these positions, and I one hundred percent agree with that statement. I think it's really important that we assemble a team with the right people. And I think if you have someone with character and has a, um, willingness to volunteer, Mr. Kelly is going to continue to volunteer. He just won't be on the board volunteering. And then that's kind of a win because you're getting two for one. Did that answer your questions, Mr. Tinland?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other conversations?
I just, I still have a math question, which is for your terms, eight seats that rotate, presumably one of them is coming up every six months. Is that correct? Then how does it work?
These six months. They're random. They're just random.
Okay, so on an average of six months.
Not really. It's really random.
It looks like the terms expire at the end of every October, and then there's two or three members of, that expire at the end of that year. So, you know, there's gonna be two or three expire at the end of twenty-three, two or three expire at the end of twenty-four, so on.
Okay. So bottom line, in the next four years, we can expect almost all of them turn over. In close, obviously not a steady stream, apparently in clusters.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. Let me, let me get simple. These positions turn over quite regularly. So if Mr. Kelly wants to continue to serve, and yet the mayor wants some fresh blood, if he's, his term expires, he steps back for a while. It sounds like there's plenty more opportunities for him to reapply.
Or device first, so we can leave him on because he's already up to speed. And in the next one, I don't know. If somebody backs down, you, you, you gotta group people working together now. Why break it up?
There are probably reasons to break it up. Probably sound reasons to break it up. For fresh thoughts and ideas.
That's a great idea. There's a whole bunch of new things we've done. I've seen them, so.
Well, I think the question here is basically how each of you would like to vote. I presented a candidate that is a good candidate. I am within the rights of what my role calls for to appoint, not reappoint, and I'm doing that, not. And I'm doing that not to be harsh or unkind, but because I think it would be a really sound move. And I'm, if you, no one has any more questions or concerns, let's just call a vote.
Councilor Sampson?
No.
Councilor Shepherd? No. Councilor Timlin?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes. So thank you after much conversation. Uh, congratulations to Joe Marucci on serving on our DDA. And thank you, Mr. Bill Kelly, for your service on the DDA. We will move on to the next item, which is consideration of appointment of Tim Quinn to the Board of Ethics to an expired term, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, to expire September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Support.
Conversation.
Shall I start again?
You're first.
You tend to like this.
Yeah, so, um, um, you know, I'm the one that nominated Mr. Quinn. I've met him, uh, during campaigning in twenty-twenty-one. He seemed to be, uh, very straightforward, cares about the community. There was a, uh, discussion though in his application, and he's not here today, that he also served or used to serve on a planning commission in, uh, a north, upper or northern county. We did ask the, uh, city attorney about that, about, uh, dual, uh, planning and, and the ethics board. And maybe you can articulate in a smaller, uh.
Yes, and I emailed you today and I'll, I'll read the portion of the email and then I can address any questions you may have. But my thought was, I took some time to look and see if there's, uh, uh, any law out there on the situation presented with respect to his appointment, uh, where one would be serving in a board in Claussen while at the same time serving in a planning commission, uh, in a different city. And I could find nothing to deal with the topic specifically. And it almost appeared to me that it was a case of first impression. Uh, I wouldn't anticipate a dual appointment at this stage you're having happen before, uh, even though dual appointments within the same city or within the same county, uh, uh, are common and actually are contemplated in the law. Uh, but not this specific instance. And for that, uh, you're gonna have a council member, for example, being a voting member of a planning commission of the same body or the same municipality. Um, the law contemplates that and it makes provisions for that. Uh, I know the appointment of the ethics board requires the appointee to be a registered voter. We have that, uh, uh, on our, attached to the packet. Obviously, his application requires, at the same time, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act also requires the appointees to the planning commission be qualified electors. Um, without looking further is what I indicated to you into the, the actual factual scenario, uh, uh, with which council is presented, I would have some reservations. So I think perhaps it's wiser to, to take a, a, a step back from this appointment to be able to at least maybe get some answers from, uh, uh, the gentleman himself, because he may be able to, well, dispel those notions. Sometimes smaller municipalities do have provisions which allow for things like this, even where one is not a resident per se. So long as they have an association with the municipality, um, they may well be able to serve. I, I don't know what, you know, but without knowing more, I have a hard time articulating more. Um, so I just wanted to let you all know that.
So with that said, uh, is it possible that we could table, uh, this, uh, this, uh, uh, nom- uh, nomination, uh, until we get some answers back from Mr. Quinn and then maybe put it back on another agenda? Got to motion that.
What, um, questions are you actually looking for him to answer?
No, just if, if he's still serving on the planning commission and then also looking at there's, if there's any conflict. I mean, I, I know there were some, uh, and we had a dialogue, uh, when we first had that nomination and just, uh, you know, the bandwidth of him serving on a planning commission, if he's still there, and also the ethics board. So I just want to make sure everything is, uh, eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, that we're doing it the right way, so.
So I would just like to know, and not pushing for or against, I would just like to know, Mr. Nushai, your letter was conjecture at best, right? There was no legal opinion. There's no law associated with any of the comments that you made in your letter. As a matter of fact, you stated there was no law to support anything in the letter, yet you said that it would be that you would steer against it or something like that?
I don't know. I said I would have reservations.
You would have reservations, but that's personal.
What's the substance of your reservations?
Well, you know, think about, you know, the, the substance of my reservations would be in the sense that would we allow, for example, if you move it a step up, a person to run for a state house seat with a property in Claussen at the same time with a property up north somewhere, running for the same seat. Right? Would, would that be okay? Would the person be running for Congress locally here in Claussen with a seat and then elsewhere? That's my reservation. And the fact that there is no law on the matter is because it hasn't happened. I don't see, I don't, I can't find anything anywhere that says that this is a thing. Uh, that said, as I indicated, there's some, you know, there's a lot of law in a very close related sort of area. And, and Mr. Timlin and I did have this conversation earlier, which was, uh, uh, there's a lot of law, for example, with respect to incompatible offices. Okay, this is not the scenario that this body deals with, is dealing with in this application. But there's a lot, a lot of law about that. And that's why I indicated to you in the, uh, uh, in my email that, uh, thank you. Uh, uh, that's why I indicated to you in my email that, uh, the, uh, dual appointments do occur and there's provisions for them, right? And we have, uh, uh, appointments within the same county, within the same municipality, right? Firefighters being able to serve on certain boards or even as council members in certain cities, depending on size. A lot of these things. I couldn't find this, but given the question asked by Mr. Timlin, I couldn't find anything, uh, 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 specific to allow for something like this. Residing or, or having residences on, on two different cities and then also at the same time being able to serve on boards in the two cities. There may well be nothing there and it may well be no issue whatsoever. I cannot state that to the board at this, to the council at this time, and that's why, hence the reservations, Mr. Anderson. And my indication was there's no full-fledged opinion, because obviously the body didn't request an opinion. This was just a, an email from Mr. Timlin and I'm tempted to respond to that email.
I have a question. Can I, uh, pull my motion back and make a motion to postpone this for the next meeting?
Yes, I mean, you could. I mean, there was a second.
Yeah, I second.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's fine.
I, should we, we pull it back?
Yeah, until, at, at least for me, I, I, I really want to get all the ports filled up, but I want to do it the right way.
I, I call my motion back and I motion that we hold Mr. Timlin or Quinn's, uh, appointment until next meeting, so you can.
And I'll continue looking in the meantime and I'll, you know, we'll be fine. We'll, we'll be able to.
So I withdraw my support for the original motion and support, um, uh, Councilmember Sampson's, uh, new motion.
Anyone else? Roll call please.
Catching up here. Substance of we're voting on is, you can give the word.
Postponing this appointment to the next meeting. The, the whole agenda item.
It's, it's for postponement. So postponement, yea or nay?
Right. Uh, Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilor Timlin?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan? Councilor Sampson?
Yes.
We will, Mr. Quinn, thank you for your willingness to serve. We will readdress this in our next meeting. Moving on to item nine H is consideration of selecting a delegate and alternate to the Southeast Michigan Community of Governments. Mr. Raker?
Yes, ma'am. Um, each SEMCOG member, community appoints a delegate who must be an elected official and an alternate, which can be an elected official, staff, or an individual selected by member to attend the general assembly. The general assembly provides input and takes action on SEMCOG's major regional plans, budget and dues, and election and election of SEMCOG officers. Delegates and or alternates are expected to attend three general assembly meetings each year that are held in March, June, and October. The meetings offer an opportunity to learn about SEMCOG initiatives and to network with the other members of SEMCOG staff.
Someone want to make a motion?
No, everyone, everyone, do it.
Uh, uh, I'll do it if no one else wants to.
Madam Mayor, I, I wouldn't serve as an alternate if it's the council as well.
Okay. I'll need an alternate if you want to be in the delegate.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to point. Also, you're, Mayor Milan, that raises, as the delegate, Joseph Raker, city manages the alternate to the Southeast Michigan Community of Governments. And a moment there, geez.
It's hard. Any comments? Anything? Roll call please.
Councilor Timlin?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilor Sampson?
Yes.
Councilor Shepherd?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just agreed, um, that I shall serve as a delegate and Mr. Raker should serve as an alternate for the SEMCOG moving forward for the next year. Now, we'll move on to the next item. It's consideration of the first reading of an amendment ordinance, section forty-six dash one oh two, to regulate payments by check with insufficient funds. Who would like to speak to that?
Motion, motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move the first reading of an ordinance to amend the City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, chapter forty-six dash one oh two, payment by check with knowledge of insufficient funds paper.
Board.
And over the years, the Claussen Police Department have had numerous occasions to deal with issues where citizens and or businesses in the city were defrauded by receiving payment by way of a check where the party issuing same did so knowing that there were insufficient funds to cover the amount. Our Code of Ordinances does not deal with the issue as such. Over the years, even in the most de minimis amounts, the charges sought and authorized were felonies from Oakland County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. The Chief of Police and the prosecuting attorney believe that the appropriate way to deal with these offenses would be through our Code of Ordinances. To that end, the ordinance before you makes the issuance of a check with knowledge of insufficient funds a misdemeanor.
I'm curious how many checks we still receive. Just curious. Many? Yeah.
Now, is this just the checks to the police department or?
No, this, it is broader than that, uh, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's, you know, the, the, what the issue that it deals with is those payments even among individuals who are businesses where payments by checks are made, but there's no money to cover the amount and the check bounces. But where that payment is done with knowledge of the fact that there are no funds contained there. Uh, the, um, we do have state law that covers the area. Uh, it's called uttering and publishing, and uttering and publishing is a for, is a felony, uh, punishable by up to fourteen years in prison. And particularly when it comes to small amounts, petty amounts. It, you know, we find, you know, uh, uh, with our, you know, the, our, our officers, our Claussen PDs, these departments throughout the state find that sometimes it's either hard to get charges for something like that, or the charges are so obscene and too much. We, 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 you know, the punishment is disproportionate to the crime actually committed. And we believe that, uh, uh, a misdemeanor, something punishable by up to ninety-three days and up to five hundred dollars in fines and costs would be a, uh, more appropriate remedy for the situation where businesses out some funds, you know, knowingly and stuff.
And it's, and it's for you as a citizen, they come to pay their taxes. Rent a check, finds out his account was hacked.
No, 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 it would not be.
But, but where'd you say that?
Because there'll be no, you know, the person would not know, you know, the intent would not, we would not be able to prove the intent under that circumstance, ever.
How does one determine the intent?
Well, i- i- it's a legal process, but, you know, they are detectives will be investigating each, uh, situation. And then there's, so, you know, this is always going to be a case that is coming to, uh, uh, be authorized for charges by Claussen, uh, police detectives. Uh, there'll be no other scenario. Somebody contacts the police, they go out there and do an investigation thorough through and through.
And Mr. Nushai, if I may, um, if someone just doesn't pay their taxes at all, then it gets rolled into the county. And so if we receive, uh, an insufficient check and it doesn't process, then those taxes are just unpaid regardless. And so they would just get rolled to the county anyway. So it really wouldn't affect the city itself. It's more or less to protect the, the community.
But they have followed the, uh, guidelines in here where they gave us a check. They didn't have insufficient.
Yeah, it is.
We would never even get that call, Councilmember Sampson. Meaning the PD would never get that call as far as, because we have a, there's a civil process in place which goes to your tax rolls. So that scenario would never materialize. That would nev- it would never begin.
Well, the taxes I know will go to the tax rolls. How about for permit? How about for?
Same, you know.
People write them all the time.
The process would, there would be no process. Nothing would trigger. There'll be no call ever made. It just, it's a civil process that's followed in that kind of case. But this is more, somebody comes to a business, um, and their food bill is a hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, uh, they know that, you know, the bank account is not existent or is an old bank account, or it's, they know that in the last six months, haven't had any money in that bank account whatsoever coming in. And they issue a check in the hundred and twenty dollars, knowing full well that there's no money in it. Uh, in that case, the business owner may call to request an investigation.
I'd hate to see our, one of our citizens to be on the spot. All of a sudden, they wrote a check and.
So would I, but it would never happen. Just, there's no process for it. That's not what this process goes after. Meaning all these, all, all the processes that go as far as citizens paying any fee to the city, uh, there wouldn't be, you know, we, we have, we deal with, if, if they're not paying water, there's a civil process that follows, right? If they're not paying their taxes or there's insufficient funds for the taxes, there's a civil process that follows. We put it on the tax roll. So that's why, you know, there would never be an investigation triggered.
But it could be, because you could look at it saying they were trying to delay the process by giving a false check. Right?
No, I, I don't, I don't, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't satisfy the legal standard by which we have. At the end of the day, any of these cases, we would have to satisfy to either a jury of a person's peers or a judge by beyond a reasonable doubt standard, that that person had the sufficient intent to commit a crime, not simply that they made a mistake, not simply that they paid not thinking or, or they didn't have, you know, they commit, intended to commit a crime. Would have to satisfy twelve jurors to that end. Would have to satisfy a judge to that end.
As expensive as a citizen.
I'm sorry.
Citizen would have a lot of legal expenses.
Certainly.
That they were just, oops, I made a mistake.
But, you know, we, we haven't had that, if there, if there were, you know, that's a valid consideration. But if there were an issue, we would have heard about it, if you think about it, because we currently do have, obviously, uttering and publishing, as I indicated to you, as a felony. If that was the case, there'll be an outcry statewide about people being unfairly prosecuted for uttering and publishing. And we're better to hear that outcry when you have a fourteen-year felony over you, right, pending against you. So if we haven't heard that, and I assure you, we haven't heard that, uh, that outcry, um, you're not gonna hear it here. You're not gonna hear from us. And it's not something that, we're not on the avant-garde as far as this particular offense is concerned. We're not the only community that does. We're one of the few communities that doesn't have a similar ordinance. Uh, we haven't had, and, and we've, we've, over the years, we've talked about it and, and eventually we all, we, obviously with the chief of police, uh, it became a priority because it is so difficult to get charges on the uttering and publishing. And when we do for these small amounts of poultry amounts, it's, the sanction is far too great. So actually, we're attempting to remediate or remedy a situation that we think is far too extreme.
So Raj, you're saying the current situation is if somebody willingly writes, knowingly writes a bad check to the city, the, the only solution is to charge him with a felony. Which court systems be there, they're not gonna be prosecuting people for felonies for writing checks in general.
They, all they are, I mean, that I assure you, it happens. Sometimes for small amounts, we can have, Kelly, help me out. I don't know if you have statistics.
Well, yeah, if it melts big enough, sure. But I'm saying for small amounts, they're just not prosecuting. There's, there's no mechanism to prosecute. We'll call petty, petty crime at this.
And, and think about it, if it is something truly petty, I mean, should the, should the punishment be fourteen years?
Yeah, it shouldn't be a felony of any kind.
That's petty to address.
Welcome to the show, boss.
Good evening. So I actually requested that Mr. Nushai, um, put this ordinance in front of you. This is an ordinance that is very common at the majority of cities in our area. Um, currently, we do prosecute these cases often, and they are felonies. Um, we don't prosecute them in a situation in which you mentioned, I think it was if somebody wrote an insufficient funds check to the city. There has to be a victim in order to process a case, a case like this. So the city would be the victim and the city would have to file a police report. So if the city's not filing a police report in those situations, it, it would never be reported and investigated. Basically, this ordinance is to make the job a little bit easier for officers and the detective bureau. Um, when submitting cases, this would be a local charge as opposed to a state charge, which is a felony. And these are usually in situations where we have a local business. It, it's very common. And people have come in and wrote checks that are insufficient. It's easy for us to file the documentation with banks, for example, Chase maybe, which will tell us this account has been closed since two thousand and sixteen. I'm pretty sure you know if you wrote a check that was closed on an account from two thousand and sixteen. So the, the detectives will investigate it, is my point. And this just allows us to make the process a little bit easier and not charge people with felonies for a less serious offense. and not charge people with felonies for a less serious offense.
Thanks, well put. If you can satisfy curiosity, how many of these felony prosecutions have been conducted in the last few years? And what number, what dollar amount threshold triggered the prosecution?
So it's really, i- it's usually over two hundred dollars for a check. Um, but the sentencing or the penalty for it does vary sometimes depending on the amount and what category it falls under, so how much a check is. But, I mean, if I just had to guess, last year alone, we maybe had ten of them. I mean, we're a small city, so we don't get a lot, and the bigger cities get a lot more because they have more businesses, so just, you know, by statistics alone, that's going to happen, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, I don't even know where we are, let's see.
So motions on.
On the floor, we'll call, yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin?
Yes.
We'll have a public hearing on this at the next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, next up is consideration of the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of Clausen Code of Ordinances, chapter seventy-eight dash one five eight, to regulate temporary no parking.
Madam Mayor, I move the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of Clausen Code of Ordinances, chapter seventy-eight dash one five eight. Temporary no parking be approved.
Or?
And Mayor, over the years, the city has attempted to enforce temporary no parking zones during events at various locations. The proposed ordinance gives the Chief of Police and Code Enforcement the authority to enforce temporary no parking by making violations of same civil infractions punishable by a fine of up to two hundred and twenty dollars.
And any questions?
So, um, just as an anecdote, um, during the fireworks, is this generally when this would happen?
This really was the nexus of it.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I, I think, uh, we encountered a situation over at, uh, Baker Ballfield where there were at least a dozen, if not more, that were parked not only in the stands area, but also in outfield. So I don't know if that happened this year, I didn't get an opportunity to, to go with that, that area, but.
We have quite a few issues with, um, people not following the no parking signs that the DBW puts up for us. Not only during the Fourth of July, but even most recently Claus and Best, just a couple people not following the signs, but mostly the Fourth of July, but as we have more events in our city, um, just to keep people safe, we might be putting these signs up more often. And as events get bigger, it could potentially be a problem if we can't enforce it.
Okay, and so that's also for street sweeping and snow removal, or is that, uh, not some?
I don't know, yeah, I don't think they, I think it's just for special events.
The other? Thank you, we'll call please.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
This too will be brought back for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Great, thank you very much. So next on our agenda is, um, consideration of going into closed session pursuant to MCL. Can I just ask a question, can we move? I don't know if anyone's here for public comment, can we readjust our schedule so that they don't have to wait? If they came just specifically for that?
If you like.
Wouldn't, um, I'd like to make a motion that we amend our agenda to move public comment to this point in our schedule, if anyone would agree with that.
Support, do you want all unfinished business as well, or no?
Um, sure.
We don't have it.
We don't have to, we can do that later, I just think there are people here who may want to speak and I would hate to have to say. Is that good?
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinlin?
Yes.
Councilman Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes. So to that end, if there's anyone here that would like to speak, public comments for items not on the agenda, you may come to the podium and please state your name and address, we'll allow you three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adam Wolf, I live at one zero nine Elmsford Drive. I'm here today, um, because I'm upset about lack of action on, um, the situation with the sewers. Um, as you know, we, a couple weeks ago, had, um, some flooding due to the storms, which is not what I'm here to talk about today. Uh, I actually have a waterproofed house, and if there was regular groundwater flooding, I wouldn't have any issue. This situation with the sewers is not new, um, it's happened multiple times on my street and affected most of the houses on my block, um, since two thousand and fourteen at least, and possibly even earlier than that. Um, uh, two weeks ago, I lost all my finished basements, um, most of the stuff in my basement as well. And it is due to our age sewers, um, the outdated sewers that are too small, that are corroding. Um, I've spoken to members of the Water Department from the Department of Public Works before about this, who I, I know they are working on a sewer project. But the pace at which, that which that is going to be done is not reasonable. This is not something that should be done over the next ten years, over the next five years. This is something that needs immediate action. And it's called for consideration of diverging funds from capital projects, from other investments that might be, you know, the city might be focused on. Infrastructure is a vital investment, and it might be time to start considering subcontracting or looking outside the city to try and get these sewers replaced. This shouldn't keep happening, and with global warming the way it is, it's going to keep happening with these storms. And I don't know about all of you, but the expense associated with this, even if insurance covers a lot, there's always going to be deductible, there's always going to be stuff that's not covered. And to have to keep redoing that over and over and over again. I also found out I had asbestos tile, which is common, but I didn't know that, that's remediation as well that I have to pay for. It needs to be fixed, it should be a number one priority right now, that infrastructure. That's what I'm here to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Of course.
I need for Joyce Lisa and I'm Jane Roberson, we live on Park Drive, and he said it all. We're at what's in fourteen, I lost everything in my basement. We've been requesting help with the sewers for years, and then they put it down to only six holes where the water didn't go down. But it didn't help at all. The drains still had to get overflowed. I mean, um, it, it's like a swimming pool out there. It was all way up to my porch in my house this year. That's pretty bad since this has been going on for quite a while. So what's going to happen when they tear down shop and build homes? Yeah. We don't even have an infrastructure to take care of what we have now. Let alone what are we going to do with what they're planning to do? We're already in debt with the high school that they're doing. I just, a- and I'm looking at eighteen million dollars here in debt. Where is this going to? It's not stopping, and nothing is going to the infrastructure. Nothing's going to anything anymore. And our crowds are getting, the parking's the same way. Our parking situation, I've heard them speaking about what they wanted to do with the parking and temporary parking and no parking. Um, there are people that are living in homes now poor in a home, they have a car. There's not enough parking for them, so they're using the streets. And Bywood, you can't get around the corner to go around from Bywood to Park Drive if there's too many cars. You can't make turns on Bywood because there's people on both sides parking. Where you used to have maybe two cars at each house, now you're getting sometime four, four cars at one house. So there's other things that we can get involved in. Um, that's way beyond what I hear us talking about here. You're adding this and adding that, but you're not repairing what we already have. And I've been here since sixty-three.
Me too, plus there's all these new apartments going up.
And also, I wanted to mention, if you guys would only turn up your microphone and I'd get more attendance, because we can't hear you. You're having a conversation among yourselves, but the people that came to sit in the back here cannot even hear what you're talking about. If it does, it's muffled. So, um, I am a little short of hearing, but I'm not wearing hearing aids, so. It's not just me, but it sounds like you carried a conversation between yourselves. But the residents are here, and maybe that's why you don't have a crowd here to, to talk about things, maybe they think it's useless. So just a couple of classes, we haven't done it over in fifty years, so.
You're welcome anytime, and sorry, we, you felt like you were excluded from our conversation.
Well, just we can't.
I hope we address it soon.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if, if I'm next on the agenda, if, if the council wanted to take a break, I could talk to these two ladies real quick, get their information, and come back and resume, if that's your pleasure.
Sure, we can do that. And then can we make one more slight change? I know you're next on the agenda, but is it possible that we could move Lisa next on the agenda because?
We like to do it, man.
Because she doesn't have to be here any longer, right? You're going to, you're going to stick it out with us. And August is going to stick it out with us this evening, and we can let Lisa have her time, and then we can let her.
Pleasures, man.
Does that sound fine? Does anyone else agree with that? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Just want to make one announcement that I, um, forgot to get in in time for the agenda. But the Clausen Police Department is, um, having a bottle and can drive this Saturday, September ninth, um, from nine AM to noon, right in the back parking lot. The proceeds from this, um, bottle and can drive benefit Special Olympics. We have a couple officers that will be running on September fifteenth, um, for Special Olympics, and this is just helping us raise money. So if anybody has bottles and cans they would like to donate, we'll be there from nine to noon. And I think we could also use a couple volunteers, um, to help Officer Barnett return cans if anybody is available around noon. Thank you.
That sounds like not very much fun.
Good evening, sorry, one more thing. I hate giving this critical feedback, but as it happens, I am so grateful Chief Bows clarified this matter about the ordinance regarding bounce checks. I had no idea what any of you were readiness were talking about until it was clarified for me, but it is deeply concerning to me that when Councilmember Sampson asked, you know, if we treat this as a bad check written to the city, uh, is that any different than a bad check to, you know, your business, Mr. Sampson? And as I understood it, you know, that's where you said absolutely not, under no circumstances would it ever happen. But it absolutely would happen, it's a bounce check. Whether you are writing it to one person or a city, it's a bounce check. I can't fathom that it would be treated any differently or should be treated any differently. It may be specially treated by, by someone's decision. But when you try to persuade people, Mr. Nujai, to, to steer them in a direction based on your opinion this way, it's, it's frightening to me, it's like special treatment. And when you similarly did it with Mr. Tinlin's quest about, is it question about, is it okay for a member to serve on a board here or a board in another city? And you say, I have great reservation about this, and so should you, Council. When there's no legal basis to have that concern, you're steering, you're, you're putting your thumb on the scale of what these are elected voices are supposed to be doing. It's particularly egregious when your own brother sits on the ethics board we're talking about and on our planning commission. It frightens me that you have this discretion. I'm sorry.
Would anyone else like to speak for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public comment, and okay, so we need to, do we need to do a?
We do five minutes.
We will do a five minute, we will have a five minute recess.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are we on again? Okay, we're gonna resume and we are at item nine K.
You are ma'am.
We are going to. Address personnel evaluations at this point. And like I just suggested a quick change up to the schedule to allow the first. First one to be Lisa Rosati's. So, um, item nine out, so I need, we need to renumber those, right? Officially.
You could just make, um, item, just switch.
Just switch yours. Okay, we're gonna switch items K and L. If everyone's listening.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we hold Mr. Rikers until, have a special meeting next week. Most here aren't aware, but my brother passed away last week. And I just, I just came back from hours ago. And I got this in the, you know, in the mail on Thursday and I'm not prepared at all. For Mr. Rikers, the other ones are easy. We, I'd prefer to do all three next week. We've been postponing this, postponing this and all of a sudden I got that.
Well, we met, we have, in all fairness, it's been talked about for a while and a. Condolences for your brother. That's real life, right? We have to address real life. What's everyone's thought? On this. Mr. Raker, what's your schedule?
I am out of the office for the next two weeks on and off.
Okay.
So I'm going to the Mapers Conference starting Saturday, come back on Tuesday and then I leave. For Europe on Sunday.
Okay, so that puts us in the end of September by the time you get back in. So, um, how, what's your thoughts people?
If Mr. Sampson, I appreciate that and I think.
Mr. Sampson, Councilmember Sampson, do the circumstances, I think. I can understand and agree actually.
I, I give you a reason, even this week. I just need. Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm not available tomorrow.
Okay, can't do tomorrow.
Hold on, I need to tomorrow to put my, finalize my notes. It is, I'm not starting from zero. I just want to be prepared properly.
Okay. Councilmember Tinlin?
Well, I understand you. It's unfortunate for your, your family death and I, you know, I want to have a, a good performance for you naturally. I've got. My stuff ready, but I'm always giddy with excitement for the source stuff anyway, so, but I, I want to have a good formal written review of the positions. Uh, but not delay timing too much, right? Cause I know. No, I'm flexible as always, so, uh, but it's gonna be based on Joe. I know Lisa's gonna be probably an easier review, but, um. I understand the delay, but we, we can't have it going on another month or so, because I know I've been pushing trying to get this done.
Oh, I don't, I've been pushing to do it, so. You guys just have to wait till we're free.
What's your thoughts, Mr. Anderson?
Well, it sounds like Joe has the more constrained schedule, right? Next two weeks you're on. So it may come down to two special meetings. I mean, Ms. Rosati and.
I, I am not for not having any tonight. I, we have people who are waiting. And if he's not, he just said he's only prepared for one, not prepared for one, which I kind of don't understand. Is it possible that you could?
If we do anything tonight, you feel comfortable with any of the three evaluations?
We can do the other two, I don't mind. Just Mr. Riker, I have.
So we could do Lisa's and then naturally the, the city clerk August then tonight still.
Yeah, sounds like you're okay.
So you're okay with proceeding with the other two?
Yeah, the two out of three.
Uh, you're not comfortable enough to be able to pivot on this and I'm pretty sure your thoughts are pretty sound and you couldn't say, well, we went through.
I don't wanna add anything. I want.
If I may for the record, council member, I apologize for your loss, but, um, at the last. Meeting when this was brought up, you had suggested having special meetings. For these, these reviews and you didn't provide any dates. No, no, we were ready and, and you were the one that said, let's have a special meeting. And no one provided the dates. I can produce the email that went out to, to everybody. So two council members provided their dates. That was it and you were not one of them. So I, I don't want to be held hostage because one person didn't do their job.
Understood. So let's, um, let's, let's call a vote on whether or not we're going to. Oh, sorry.
There was a motion to postpone Mr. Raker's review. It's all, I got no date. That's all I, I've heard.
Well, there was no second. So it dies.
That is correct. It's still not a second.
So let's, would someone else like to make another motion?
I think the motion, next motion was to, to move.
Yes.
Miss Rosati in front of me.
That was, that was going to be my motion. Yes, twice I think.
So just way of clarification, the original motion was to delay all interviews or just Mr. Rikers?
Just Mr. Riker, but it never got off the ground without a, they had no second. So it dies.
So, um, are we?
So I want to be transparent and just, uh, uh, have a vote on it. So we're just clear or no? Again, I'm new, I'm new.
It's, it's, what's on the floor is a switch of.
K through L.
K to L and that's it.
So does everyone support moving Lisa Rosati to the K position on our agenda and moving. Mr. Baker to the L position on our agenda?
Support.
Thank you. Any, uh, everyone understands that part. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Tinlin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson? Councilwoman Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have just effectively moved so that we can proceed with the personnel evaluation of our city treasurer, Lisa Rosati. And then we did, was effectively moved, um, our personnel evaluation of city manager Joseph Baker to the next level. So now the conversation is. A, a motion, well, if you, if no one approved a motion to.
And you did.
Postpone, wait a minute. He made a motion to postpone, sorry, I mean that, but he made a motion to postpone. Nobody picked up on it. Hence, we are continuing with the agenda as planned.
As amended, yes.
Understood. Okay, that's what we just did. So, that being said. I'd like to make consideration of going into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two sixty eight H. MSA four dot one eight zero zero eighteen A of the Open Meetings Act to conduct the periodic evaluation of the city treasurer.
So move.
City treasurer, right?
Yeah.
Might I recommend the make a motion probably for all? You don't have to come back after every review.
Okay. Perfect. Then I would also.
I withdraw my motion, but your second. And, yeah, cause the mayor made the motion, you made the second and then.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Tinlin had an extra support.
So we're adding in also, um, going into closed session for evaluation of city manager Joseph Baker. And the personnel evaluation of city clerk Poguskic.
That's important. So.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mine will be an open session now.
So can we move yours last?
Whatever your pleasure.
One more time. Cause it'll make sense. We'll be out and then we'll come back. Does that make sense? Do we have to do anything official with that? Are we good? Okay, thank you. No, you said we're fine.
Just the, you know, the, the, the portion about, uh, as a major Raker, since he's choosing to do so. In open session, you wouldn't go to the.
We're now removing Mr. Raker for going into closed session as he has just requested to have this meeting in open session.
Still supporting him.
Support, making the amendment to the first motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson? Councilwoman Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinlin?
Yes. Yes.
So.
That's the amendment. We still need to go to.
So now we're.
The, the main motion.
The main motion to go into closed session, period.
Yes.
The, the, the reasons we, we amended.
I'm so confused.
Uh, we have a motion. Going to closed session? Same motion, same people, okay. That's fine. So Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson? Councilwoman Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinlin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna take a break and go to closed session. You can remain here if you'd like, um, to come, when we come back to do. Our city managers. Um, our city managers.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We've we're here resuming from our first two employee reviews and we are back. First thing we're going to do is make a motion on. Plan of action if someone is ready to do that.
We have the jargon, the.
The mayor, if I may, I would recommend that the motion be to adopt the professional improvement plan as agreed to by the city clerk. So moved.
Support.
Roll call please.
Uh councilman Shepard.
Yes.
Councilor Tinlin.
Yes.
Mayor Prose Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Milan.
Yes.
Councilman Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you. We have adopted the professional improvement plan. Now we're going to move to a. Personnel evaluation of our city manager Joseph Baker. Mr. Baker has requested to have his evaluation performed in an open session, which is why we are here. Mr. Tinlin, I'll let you start if you'd like.
I I thank you for the honor. I'll start first then. So um. If uh we have the performance of value valuation checklist and I'm going to go through the general scoring on each duties of description. So the management of organization. I scored threes across most of those items. I did rank four, which is, you know, excellent or very good. Ron effectively runs the operations of organization creates a collaborative team building an environment for the staff. A lot of good feedback from uh employees reporting to our city manager. And then another one where I give a four, which is very good because I tend to stay in the middle on three is identify as organizational problems and takes remedial action. Around the execution of policy, I ranked Joe three, which is again good meets all expectations. I did rank him a four presents matters in a factual and analytical way, especially when he's here with council with us. Um financial management, I I gave him a very good, which meets all expectations and above expectations. And that's really around how the uh the budget was prepared this year versus last year, and then demonstrates integrity and creativity approaching budgetary matters. So I think at least from my time here. He's demonstrated thinking outside the box. Our relations with the council. I gave three across the board. This means it meets all expectations. This be the regular updates. Makes an effort to be accessible to councils, handle issues brought by the council and keeps a positive attitude and approach to new ideas and issues and complaints. On community relations, I scored four for makes an effort to general general communication issues. I mean, that's very good and meets expectations of four as well on runs the city well and in a professional and positive manner. And the rest of the points I ranked three, which is worked for actually with media and press works effectively with community organizations and educates the community on the sitting goals and services. On the communications, I ranked it a three, which again meeting expectation good. I did have one four in there about presents the council committee with clear and accurate written reports correspondence, and this is on the weekly updates and also issues facing the council. On leadership, I gave a three for the first two provides council organization with real solutions and creative alternate issues assures the council decisions are thought out and objective and consistent with past practices and legal and ethical. And then four for makes use of sound administrative practices such as organization teamwork, time management. And then four leads the organization to effective management people on tasks. Um professionalism, I ranked it three on a majority and four on two items, devotes time and energy to the job. Joe definitely spends a lot of time extra supporting our community. And then demonstrates a high ethical standards in the organization. Uh on achievements as additional comments on the achievement side, Mr. Riker has continued to work on getting the city administration organized, new staff trained to get our core city processes functioning smoothly again. He successfully recruited experienced staff to help with the new employees gaining the experience needed to ensure the city processes are operating effectively. This will be an ongoing effort for twenty three and twenty twenty four for him and his team. The twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four budget content and structure was a significant improvement over last year's document and process. Working with the city council body on city goals and objectives was a significant achievement for the city. Opportunities for improvement, while overall relations have improved in twenty twenty three versus twenty twenty two with the city council body. That effort by both parties needs to continue in the future twenty twenty four. Stable government development of employees, communication to city employees or city goals and objectives as approved by the city council. Move beyond damage control as a city departments and key manage management management positions stabilize. And then an active promotion and use of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four city goals and objectives to achieve positive results in the budgeted period. That's it.
Councilor Shepard, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'll keep it uh. Brief, uh just summarize each of the segments. So management of the organization. Um overall, I believe you're doing a great job. Um I gave you fours and fives, majority fives. Uh for management of the organization, execution of policy, similar situation, mostly fives, one four. Financial management, I gave you fives in both categories, relations with the council. And again, I I'm looking for my perspective as far as the the. Uh what I see and feedback that I get and they gave you fives uh for that. Um community relations. Um similar situation, I gave you three fours and two fives. Communications, I gave you three fives and one four. Leadership, I gave you two fives and two fours. And a professionalism, three fours and two fives on a professionalism. For additional comments. I mentioned that you maintain an open and positive dialogue with our superintendent involving the. The uh new buildings and new projects that are going undergoing and also. I appreciated the the way that you develop the with council, the city's vision, mission and values. I think that was. Highly, highly important thought that we didn't really have that before, and I really appreciate having that put together so that we can point to it and say this is why we're doing this. So and you've demonstrated that to me. I appreciate.
I appreciate that, but I would be remiss if I didn't. Your colleague next year had a lot to do with that too. But I am proud to have it conspicuously placed in all departments.
And like I said, I we've had conversations and you've targeted that as this is the reason why we're doing something. And that's, you know, that maintains that vision that maintains the consistency as far as the message that's being conveyed in how we're directing our business on council and throughout the city. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Prose Anderson, would you like to go next?
Yeah, sure. So for the first category, managing the organization. I think you're doing a good job. I just gave you threes all the way through. Execution of policy, again, doing a good job, gave you threes all the way through. Financial management, again, threes, I think everything seems to be fine. Uh relations with council, kind of a little mixed bag. Provides regular updates to the council, keeping them informed of current critical issues. They give you a four. You're doing very well at keeping us updated. Uh makes an effort to be accessible to council members, giving you four for that. I've always feel like I can get a hold of you. Uh handles issues that are brought by the council in consistent timely manner, maintains an honest truthful professional relationship with each council member, gave you a three, but you do a good job there. Uh keeps positive mental attitude and approach to new ideas, issues and complaints raised by council members. Uh that's the only two I've given you here. I think my little improvement wouldn't uh wouldn't hurt. Uh some of our meetings have been a little um. Rankerous at times. Um I think things are getting much better. So I've already seen improvement in that area, but I think. You as the paid professional supervised by a band of amateurs, you were held to a higher standard. So I think again, I thought I'm already seeing improvement in that there, Mr. Riker. So just keeping that positive mental attitude. Um community relations, pretty much threes, although I've got a four, makes an effort to understand general community issues. And concerns remains involved and active in the community. I think you've done a very good job of connecting with our community here. It's funny, I think, Mr. Riker. I've lived in this area almost my whole life. I grew up in Roy Look, lived down my first house in Madison Heights. And when I came to Clausen, I'd always had friends tell me, oh, Clausen's the most wonderful place. And I used to say, yeah, right, whatever. You look the same. You're just down the street. You couldn't even tell the boundary if you crossed it. And then we came to Clausen, I realized, wow, things really aren't different here. They really are. Better. Okay, see, and I think it's kind of almost like a little revelation, and I think you really. Got the revelation yourself, you know, be me cider, you come over here, and I think you've really embraced the community. So I'm giving you four for that. Um and then communications, basically. Ensuring the council members receive relevant information, Tommy Manor, yep, good reading, three presents council with clear, accurate information, three. Uh response to correspondence requests and complaints quickly and completely have been your form that. Think that's been a very good and facilitating open to a conversation, a a three. Forgive me there for talking about myself for too long. I guess that's not appropriate in evaluation, but I do. I do want to say that. I've been there myself with you, thanks. Right. Um leadership, threes all across to professionalism. Uh deals effectively with the public and organizations of three, devotes time and energy to the job before. The speed with which you've responded during off hours, I think reflects that that. You've definitely putting a lot into the job. Number three demonstrates high ethical standards, yes. Uh works to keep politics and personal perspectives out of the decision making process. I give you a four for that. I think he's striving very hard to be as objective as possible, and I respect that. And number stays professional, stays active in professional organizations and regional issues, the three, I think you're doing very well there, so. And that's pretty much all I have.
Councilon Sampson.
I'm ready. Okay, going to your list. Uh management organizations, effectively runs the operation of the organization, I give him a three. Creates a collaborative team building environment for staff, I would say it too. There's too much conflict between that. Council and some administration recognizes the components of staff and others working on behalf of the city. We give him a four and that's. Supports professionalism, growth. Opportunity within the organization, we gave him a four because I think sends a lot of people right spots. Accepts full accountability for the staff. And the outcomes of the projects or decisions, we have two on that. Uh identifies the organization problems and takes remedial action. We give a three. He's usually on top of something. Understands complies with policies and procedures governing the city. I gave him two on that. Uh this whole category execution of policy is is low because. Uh several motions have just totally been blown off and never been done. And we just allow this to happen. But for implemented policy, I give him zero. But works towards accomplishing identified council goals, I gave him a one. Uh presents this is real, this whole area needs to be improved, presents matters in factual analytical way. We gave him two. I've seen a lot of conflict on some of his correspondence. Uh coordinates council policy decisions to staff department and the community, I see a one. There's a lot of. There's a lot of this. Properly prepares management budget, I give him three on that, it got done a little slow. Uh demonstrates integrity and creativity in approaching a budgetary. Uh I gave you two on that, because uh. It just took too long to get it and too many things changed and too many things come out the night, the night after we passed the budget.
Just for record, it says demonstrates ingenuity and creativity, so no one, no one figures his integrity is bad in that category, just for the record.
Makes an effort to be accessible to council members. I gave him three, because he does it to most of you guys, but he's kind of inaccessible to me. Handles issues that are brought to the council, and it consists in timely manner, maintains. An honest, truthful, professional relationships with each other, each of the councilmen, I gave him two on that, and those. Keeps a positive attitude approach to new ideas. Uh for that category, I'm a zero, because it's usually who who presented it. It's 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 only some of people. Makes an effort to understand general c- community and the consensus. Remains involved uh. I I will give him a one on that, I I was gonna give him zero, but I just give him a one.
Thank you.
You bet. Presents it say you well in a professional positive manner, I I give him a four on that. Works positively proactively with media and press, I give him a four on that. Works uh efficiently with community organizations, including the DDA, DEA, the school. I wish that was broken up, because DDA, we had such a long time trying to get a budget. But what the school gets all this time, so I think we need to. Move our priorities a little bit, I gave him zero on that one. Educating community with uh city goals and services. I gave him a one in that area, because uh we had asked one of the motions to do. Couple townhouse, brown, you know, townhouse meetings, to teach people about. Recycling and all that, if we go back and look at the motions, that was too intrusive, he said, and he was gonna do, and it. It kind of got done in different meetings, but it wasn't what was looked, wasn't what was argued with this. Uh council, we we wanted one time people get to go in and hear about everything, and it never happened, but it was his choice. Uh to blow us off, ensures council members receive relative information in a timely and effective manner. It could be a two or a three, I'd give him a three then. Uh presents council. And the community with clear, accurate written reports. Uh just the two, not overly impressed. Respond course, responds to correspondence, requests and complaints quickly and appropriately, two there, because I'm still waiting for answers on a few things. And uh so days, a two-way communication encourages mutual honesty and respect with the community. Council and staff, I gave him one on there. Provides council with uh organization and the leadership. With real solutions and created, I give him a three. Assures council decisions are thought out, objective, consistent with the past. I gave him two in that area, because we've been led down the road before. Makes use of sound administrative practices, I give him three in that area, please. The organization uh through effective time or effective management of people and task. It's a, it's a tough one, I I gave him a two on that, because I see some areas where we need some help on. Some training and some professionalism. Deals effectively and appropriately with the public and other. Other organizations, I gave him three on that. Devotes time and energy to the job, I give him four there, demonstrates high ethical standards in in the organization, give a three there. Works to keep politics. And personal perspectives out of the decision-making, my game is zero there. Just as you back watch the tapes where you called me up. Oh, I can't even think of it anymore, but actually it may just attacks on the council people.
No, just you.
Just me, okay, that works. Uh is very professional, so stays active in a professional organizations, I gave a four there.
Thank you. Hey, I I will start mine with management of the organization. Effectively runs the operations of the organization, I give you a four, creates a collaborative team building environment for staff for. Recognize the accomplishments of staff and other agencies working on behalf of the city, I give you a five, and I think that's also speaks to your leadership. You're very good at sharing who's assisting you and giving praise, and I think that's great. Supporting professional growth and opportunity, uh five, accepting full accountability for staff and the outcome of city projects or decisions, a five. Identifies organizational problems and takes remedial action of four. On underneath execution of policy, understands and complies with policies and procedures of four, implementing city policy fairly and consistently. Based on council decisions of five, works towards accomplishing identified council goals of five. Presents matters in a factual analytical way, four, coordinates council policy decisions to staff departments and other organizations in the community of four. Um underneath project management. Properly prepares and manages the budget, five, demonstrates ingenuity and creativity in approaching budgetary matters of five. Relationships with council. Um providing regular updates to the council and keeping them informed about current and critical issues, five, makes an effort to be accessible to council members, five. It handles issues that are brought to council in a consistent and timely manner. I give you a four, and then it talks about professional relationships with each council member. I can't speak to everyone else, but I would say we're, you're doing great, so thank you. Keeping a positive attitude and approach to a new idea, issues and complaints raised by council members of four. Making an effort to understand general community issues and concerns and remaining active in the community. Of five, representing the city well and in a professional and positive manner, of five, works proactively with the media and press. Although fortunately, we haven't had to do that much, I'll give you a five. Working effectively with community organizations, including the DDA, the school district, regional authorities and other agencies of four. Educating the community on city goals and services of four. Communications, I ensuring city council members receive relevant information in a timely and effective manner of four. Presenting the council and community with clear and accurate written reports and correspondence, four, responding to correspondence, requests and complaints quickly and appropriately, a five. Facilitating open to a communication and encouraging mutual honesty and respect with the community, council and staff will give you a five. Reading underneath leadership, providing the council and the organization with real solutions and creative alternatives to issues and problems of four. Almost, assuming the council decisions are thought out, objective, consistent with past practices and are legal and ethical, five. Makes use of sound administrative practices such as organization, communication, teamwork and time management of four. Leading the organization through effective management of people and tasks, five, and in professionalism, I gave you um. Five for dealing effectively and appropriately with the public and other organizations, five for devoting time and energy to the job. Five for demonstrating high ethical standards in organization, five. In works to keep politics and personal perspective out of the decision-making process, and four, and staying active. In professional organizations and regional issues, because I don't really know what you do with regional issues, so. Those are my um num- numerical comments, as I stated with the other people that we discussed. In addition to my own um experiences with you, which I will say. This is much higher at this point in the year than it probably would have been at this point last year, but I attribute that to your willingness to. Want to accomplish good uh as well as mine, and I think that speaks really highly to your commitment to this organization. Your commitment to this council, and I think that just speaks it towards your management and professionalism, so I want that to be noted in case anyone's watching going, oh my gosh, I can't believe she did that. But there is sound reason, and if you're paying attention, it's because true progress has been made, and that's what leaders do. They put things in their pockets sometimes and move on and realize there's way more we have in common that we don't have in common, and then just work with it, so. Under comments for achievements. You have ability to share praise with your team, and that is exceptional. You have built a strong team of professionals. You are adept in identifying and encouraging other strengths. Many individuals on your staff have confidence in your capabilities and vision. You support your team, care about them as individuals, and hold high standards, which you also impose upon yourself. You're good at bringing people together for a common goal. You're good at looking for outside opportunities for funding road projects and infrastructure. I know you're just getting started with that, you and your team, but we're um really counting on you, we're. We're looking for you to do that, no pressure there. You are encouraging and empowering, and that was a direct quote from one of your staff members, and I think that those two coupled together. Um is something you should be proud of, because we can often encourage people, but often leaders don't empower people, and that's where we have failure in organizations. Your willingness to address sticky situations, listen to both sides, you're open to discussions on ways to improve, and that also came from staff members. You have an open door policy that isn't an absolute, that is an absolute open door policy. You yourself work hard and. Uh learning about other facets of municipality, um examples were given of concrete, staying on track, encouraging others to do so. Following timelines and understanding things outside of the management perspective of the city. You were given great kudos for taking the time to actually delve into the processes and the procedures. That are involved in many of the day-to-day tasks here, which, you know, you may say, why can't we fix those? Infrastructure problems, or like, why can't we just put patch on all these things and move on? You've taken the time to become educated, and your staff truly appreciates that. Opportunities for improvement, I would just say you learn more about the workings of the city, the infrastructure roads and um other process and institutional knowledge, which of course only comes with time. And um also, there's always room for improvement with communication with all of us, because we all communicate differently and have that different expectations. But I would like to thank you uh for, for your um graciousness with me and coming around. Because I'm enjoying this process right now, and I see strides, and I'm really proud of some of the things that have been accomplished recently, and I have to one hundred percent say it's because you. Engaged where you shouldn't engage, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know what, people? Anyone have anything else?
I think we're on to the next agenda item.
Okay, let's see.
Buying the hard copies and giving to him.
Yes, if you would.
Okay, so our next agenda item would be old unfinished business. House number ten, when you really wanted to talk about old unfinished business, but I think at this hour, you said, even if I had it, I would probably not stand well to bring it up.
Three pages to go through if we have time.
Do have time, we we're here for business, if you want to do it, you're important.
Uh ten thirty at night has humbled me, so I have no comment.
Okay, then we'll move on to city clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll make this briefer than I wrote it. AV applications hit everyone's mailboxes over the weekend. We are getting phone calls of people asking why they didn't get them. Uh there are a lot of people who checked off permanent ballot. For the November election and moving on, so they don't get an application, they just get sent a ballot in October when they come, and there's there's obvious confusion, it's new to everyone. So if you don't get a a ballot in first week of October, call us, we'll make sure you get you, get your ballot, okay? It's new to all of us. Um we're still accepting applications for boards and commissions, we'll update the list for the last two meetings, all the people that have been uh appointed. Not, we always take applications, but every board has an opening now, so a lot of that has been cleaned up. Uh lead women voters are still doing their candidate forum on Thursday the fourteenth from seven to eight fifteen here. And uh finally, it's with a heavy heart that I share that my deputy clerk Jennifer Hader's last day with the city of Clausen will be this Thursday, September seventh. Jennifer and I have been friends a long time, and I was lucky to poach her out of Farmington soon after I started here. She's been my right hand and partner through the last two years, and I was lucky to have officiated her wedding right here in these council chambers standing right there. I'm gonna miss having her around, and I want to thank her for all she's done for me, uh since she's been here, and I wish her happiness and success and whatever she chooses to do moving forward. And she's here for two more days, if any of you want to give her a call or an email and wish her good luck. Thanks, you'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Our city attorneys report, Mister Newt.
Um Madam Mayor, very briefly, I just wanted to let you know, thank you first of all for passing the two ordinances uh that we did the first reading on today. Uh I just want to let you know that after the second reading, we'll have a few more ordinances presented to council um. In conversation with the uh chief of police, we invited a couple items that we'd like you to consider. So we'll bring those items uh after the second reading, um and. Skip the rest that is late, thank you.
Um any questions for us, Attorney? We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, ma'am, uh make this quick, uh stakeholders from Clausen Fest and the staff met to do a debrief, uh very successful evolution. Uh last weekend, and uh we're already planning for next year's event. Um and I also have a commendation uh from a resident for the DPW. Uh dear Mister Raker, I write to commend your tree trimming crew for the quick response and efficient work clearing a large fallen limb. Near my home this morning, the branch of an oak tree had broken during the storm late last week and had fallen partially onto the road and sidewalk. Without prompting, the city came out this morning and removed the branch, which had not totally separated from the tree in under an hour. The crew was friendly and very efficient, and the work was flawless. They even raked up the yard before leaving. I was so impressed at their professionalism. Thank you so much for taking care of our city. I have lived here many, many years and have had nothing but excellent service from the DPW. Keep up the good work, sincerely. Mary Copin, Closet and Resident.
That it?
That's it, ma'am.
Okay, and we'll go to city council comments, council member Sampson. Thank you, Mayor Proton Anderson.
I have none.
I have none.
So disappointing.
Uh just as a reminder that school is back in session and that uh everyone please use caution uh during the time uh at drop-off. And uh at the end of the school day. That's all.
Great, um Claus and Paws is on the twenty-third in the park. Uh fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce, if you have a pet or you like pets, contact the Chamber of Commerce and sign up, they're looking for sponsors as well. And with that, I will entertain motion to dismiss.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Support.
Took too long. Uh Councilman Timlin?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Tim Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yep.
Councilmember Shepherd, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone.